It is a virtual meeting. It is Wednesday, August twenty twenty and it is six P M. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Garza, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Jones.
All right. Your Lord. Here we are one more time. To me, as a city council, we ask Lord for your guidance. We ask you, Lord, that that you continue to bless those in need, especially those with the COVID nineteen. We ask you, Lord, that you bless those affected by it and we ask that you take care of them. We ask you, Lord, that that you bless this great city and we ask that you protect our our soldiers and police officers and first responders that are in arms way of all this chaos that is going on in this world. We ask you, Lord, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible. Next, business and orders, item one B, vocal and finding. Is Garza?
Yes, Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temp Garza.
Here.
Mayor, Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
And Commissioner Jones.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, business and orders, item one C, public forum. Do we have anyone signed up for public forum, Ms. Garza?
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Jesse Sesar. He called in to sign up for public forum. Uh, Mr. Sesar, you can come on.
Yes, good afternoon.
Evening and have five minutes, Mr. Sesar.
Good evening, sir, Mr. Mayor. I was calling pertaining to a complaint I had filed with against the city manager. This, this was on a date, May twenty second was the date it happened. The complaint was filed the week after. I would just, I just wanted to see what the outcome of the complaint would be.
Okay, so the question is, what is the outcome or?
Yes, sir. I never, I never had anybody reach out to me from City Hall or anything like that, based on the, on the complaint itself.
Well, to be, whenever there's a complaint, Mr. Sesar, we'll go ahead and follow up here where there's a complaint against anyone. Then there's and those are addressed within the individual. Now, if in this particular case, I know we had a conversation, Mr. Sesar, and that is something that we can, it's still open. If you ever want to sit down and have a conversation between the city manager, yourself, myself, or any of the city commissioners, we can go ahead and see what direction. One is, what are the things that we can work on to improve those relationships? And two, is there anything that we can do within that parameter of any of the that you have is to sit down and have a conversation and try to work them out? And that's something that we certainly offer you and I would love to have that conversation, but sit down and have that conversation. I know you declined at that time, but if we could sit down and like I said, it could be the city commissioners or myself, along with Mr. Perez, and have that conversation to reflect on what are the, you know, again, going back to the concerns and can we address those concerns? So that way we can come up to a, an amicable solution for addressing any of those transgressions or perceived transgressions. Is that something you would like to, to be part of?
I just wanted to, it sounds good, sir. Like I said, it was just, I believe as a citizen, the city manager had a, a, a correct way of presenting himself to me. And the way he came about it, he didn't do it. He had no means, right? He had no base. And, and if there's, and if he could give me an apology, not just me, but the church that was involved. You know, that's something that I would gladly like as well as the, the city of Rio Grande, because, you know, he mentioned things like I was causing traffic at the light. I've seen public officials do that and I never see them have any trouble. So if, if he could, you know, just form an apology and admit, you know, what, what happened was wrong. And, and like you said, if we could sit down and make things right. But, you know, I, I bought it here to the city just to, as, as a concerned citizen, because I never received anything back pertaining to, to that, you know, just what you had said earlier. But if, if there's any way Mr. Perez could do that, we could, we could sit down. There's no problem.
Start there. Why don't we, why don't we sit down and have a conversation? And schedule it for this coming week and start there. And, and have a conversation. Like I said, we could do it here at City Hall. Do it elsewhere, but let's sit down. So we'll reach out to you on that regard and have a conversation about how to proceed in situations regarding any concern for, for any of our residents or again, going back to, to any grievances or that sort of thing. But if you're interested, just go ahead and schedule that for either, what's today? Today's Wednesday.
Today's Wednesday.
Yeah, Thursday or Friday or not next week, but let, let's see. So we'll reach out to you and then schedule something. Would you be in agreement?
Yes, sir. We could do that.
Perfect. Perfect.
All right.
Then let's do that.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm, I'm new to this. You know, I'm, I'm a young I'm a young entrepreneur coming to the, you know, and I'm learning as I go. And thank you all for your time and thank you for all you do for our city.
And by the way, just to, to be on that note regarding that event that you all had, Wings Over Rio, was a very successful event. And congratulations to the different businesses that took part in that. And thank you for, for doing that for a community. And that's one of the things that we have to find a way to, to manage. Because is how do we manage to where we can give something like that, but at the same time, consider the issues that could, could happen there. And I'll be frank with you, of course. When we did this, when we did that event, for example, the Wings Over Rio, you're still going to have some traffic. So that's probably one of the things about coordinating meetings and see. And from now on, we want to take that initiative to any time that there is a function on eighty-three that we can have a coordination meeting to sit down and address any potential risks that could, could related to traffic. But that goes for everyone, right?
Yes, sir.
Same time, we want to make sure that, especially when people are giving back to our community. And, and I did, by the way, I have a form for you. Thanking the organization and the different businesses that participated in this event, giving back to our community. I know you all did an excellent job giving community and there were over two hundred entities that were served, which is excellent. And that's kudos and speaks volumes to our community that people are willing to give back, especially during this time of need. And it's, it's good of this where I know it's been over four million pounds of food that have been distributed over the course of the last several months. That's just for our community, you know, so thank you for, for being part of that and giving to our community. And like I said, I will have that form delivered to you, thanking your organization. And any other organizations that have done this, I would like to take that initiative to do that too, right? Thanking those organizations that are giving back to our community. So, but let's get together, sir, and we'll, we'll work out any, any details about all the concerns that you have.
All right, sir. Thank you for your time and thank you to the rest of the city commission. And you guys have a good evening.
Likewise. Thank you. Ms. Garza, do we have anyone else in public forum?
No, sir.
Okay. Next, business and orders, item two, item to consideration, letter A, approval of minute order number twenty twenty dash one. Clarifying a clerical error made on, on the August twelfth, twenty twenty, city commission meeting. Item six D to reflect approval of change order number two. Ranchelli Construction L O C E D A project number zero eight seven nine zero five zero seven four Creek Work. Mayor Commissioners for that, well, we got Ms. Beas. I believe it's a correction that's being made on the order. Ms. Beas, are you on?
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioner, good evening. The, this item is to correct the clerical order, the change order minute one, we had already issued change order one, that was to extend the contract for Ranchelli to June thirtieth. And so it should, it should have read change order number two, where we reflected the credit savings on the final closing for this contract. Did discuss this with our C attorney and he said it was a clerical error and we could proceed with the minute order to correct it.
Now, at this time, do we aren't there any other questions? Can we entertain a motion at this time?
Pass the moment to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez. Do we have a second?
My second.
Second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, raise your left hand. Passes. Next item is item three, public hearing, letter A. A public hearing regarding the proposed city of Rio Grande City at the lower tax rate of point five zero seven five seven nine for a hundred valuation. It is six twelve P M. This time we'll open the hearing. Do we have anyone signed up for this item, Ms. Garza?
No, sir. Nobody signed up for this item.
Or if there's anyone that would like to talk about this item or discuss it or has any questions, please do so at this time. This time it is six twelve P M. End of hearing. Next, business and orders, item four, resolutions, letter A. Consideration and approval of a plan of finance and a resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty seven, authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificate of obligation. Mayor Commissioners for that one, we've got Mr. Tejera. Tejera, are you on?
I'm right here. I apologize.
Tejera, hi, sir. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I hope you and your families and staff, I hope everybody's doing well, along with your families. I'm here to present the plan of finance and also Mr. Martinez, your bond counsel is present at the meeting and it's a Texas Water Development Board financing. This has probably been in the making for quite a few years. I know your utility director can go into detail about the projects, but the total project that the application that we had submitted last year to the Texas Water Development Board was for a total project amount of seven million, four hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, seeking financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board. The Water Development Board approved the financing, approved to loan the city money. And they approved a grant of two million, eighty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. It's what they call principal forgiveness. And this money is going to be used towards the wastewater system improvements and expansions. And the balance will be a loan, which is the part of the plan of finance on the certificates obligation for five million, four hundred and ten thousand. But if you turn to page one, Mayor, I believe it's in your packet. The column from B through N on the right-hand side, we have the property values, which are final and certified on row twelve, five hundred and twenty-seven million, one ninety-six, five twelve. It was an increase of three point two percent. Columns D and F, that already contains the seventeen million, the COs that we sold earlier this year and closed a few weeks back. Now, we also have the, on column K, we have the less self-supporting of the two thousand and twenty, the transfer in order to keep the tax rate going from going nine point five five cents on column M, row eleven to eleven point two, the INS is going to go up about one point six five cents. The transfers are going to come in on column K for the first year from the INS reserve account, five hundred and eight thousand. The next three years will be from the utility system. The columns G, H and I, Mayor, they're all negative amount. Those are self-supporting, either from the sales tax for the COs that we just sold or from the utility system on column I on the COs we just sold. So if you turn to the following page, Mayor, on column E, again, going to Water Development Board for a thirty-year financing, the preliminary debt we're showing on column E, the interest rate is one point four three percent. That's not a typo. The Water Development Board is a low source of funding. And again, it's a attractive interest rate. It's not locked in. We won't be able to lock that in until October. A few days before the council approves, the debt is final. So again, we're hoping it's going to be about one point four three percent or lower. And again, the total loan amount is five million, four hundred and ten thousand. The project fund, about five million, two hundred and twenty thousand. The difference about a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars is the Water Development Board origination fee, fee and expenses for F A Bond Counsel, the Texas Attorney General. So all of that comes out to about a hundred and ninety thousand. Again, the Water Development Board origination fee is about a hundred thousand dollars. And the principal and interest is on column E. And the first payment is interest only. And that won't occur, Mayor, until next fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-one. And then principal and interest will begin in two thousand and twenty-two, all the way down to two thousand and fifty. Now, if you go to column J, Mayor, I know y'all are thinking, okay, is this going to impact the utility system? Or is this going to impact the INS tax rate? The utility director has already strategized, has already set either the current rate structure to take care of this debt or potential rate increases in the future that will take care of the debt on column J. If you notice, it's a negative amount. It's not going to impact the INS tax rate. The INS tax rate is going to be roughly about eleven point two next fiscal year. The utility system is going to take care of all this debt on column J. If you notice at the very bottom on column E, row forty-three, and column J, row forty-three, it's the same amount, six point six billion. So again, it's self-supporting and will not be supported by the INS tax rate. Repeat, the council, utility department have done a great job strategizing. We are not going to increase taxes to pay for this debt. This debt will be paid by the utility system. Page four, it's the timetable. It's preliminary. And again, the law changed last year. We have, if this item is approved, we have a notice of intent on September the second, a notice of intent on September the ninth, two notices of intent back to back. We will come back, not on October the fourteenth, but on October the twenty-eighth, Mayor. I believe that is a meeting, your last meeting in October. It is the fourth Wednesday, I believe, correct, Mayor, if I'm wrong. That is an actual regular scheduled meeting for the city. At that meeting is when the city will approve the financing is final. We should lock in the interest rate that week before the meeting. And at that meeting on October twenty-eighth, we'll give you the final interest rate, the final payments. And again, tax rate will not support this debt, will not pay for the debt. No tax rate increase for next fiscal year for this debt. And we should, it's an installment closing, so we anticipate closing around November the twenty-fourth. And if you turn to page five, it's pretty much just the working group participants on the COs. City of Rio Grande City, Texas, financial advisor, co-bond counsel, Winstead, Ricardo Perez Law Firm. The purchaser is the Texas Water Development Board. We are not going to go out in the open market. It's a private placement loan with the Texas Water Development Board agency and the paying agent, B O K Financial. I know it's a lot of information, Mayor, but it's something that the city and the, and the staff and and the council have been working on for quite a few years. The application was submitted last year. The Water Development Board approved to loan the city money. A little over two million loan forgiveness, principal forgiveness, the balance about five point four loan. We think it's a great opportunity at a low interest rate for the city of Rio Grande City. Mr. Martinez, is there anything you need to add?
No, I think you got it covered. We've already been working with Ms. Garza and staff to make sure we're queued up for our publication as customary and getting that up on the website is required by law as well. So I think you teed it up pretty well, spending on the approval of the council right now.
So just to be clear, it's really seven million dollars, two million of that is forgiveness. And what we'll be paying is five million at a one point four three, more or less percentage rate for the next, how many years again? Thirty years was it?
Thirty years. Yes, sir. And the interest rate will be locked in, fixed. It won't change.
Right. Excellent. And of course, two million dollar forgiveness loan, I mean, on that end, that allows us the opportunity to, to bring in a excellent project and minimizing the cost to the taxpayers as well without having to, again, raise taxes or any of that. So congratulations on that too, Mr. Cruz, for bringing that on. And again, to Mr. Tejera and Mr. Martinez, because these are projects that are city needs, you know, and, and we can't prolong them anymore. So excellent opportunity for us, particularly at very, very low interest rate. And these are projects that are going to be long-lasting for the next thirty, forty years. Again, congratulations on that excellent presentation. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Mayor, thank you very much. And, but I think a lot of this credit goes to our city manager, our finance director and Mr. Tejera. As Commissioner Ramirez is well aware, this project started over a year ago when we went to Austin to go visit directly with the board and, and, you know, tell them, what do we need to do to get in the forefront? We didn't think it was even an opportu, there was even an opportunity. But, you know, through Mr. Tejera and Mr. Cantu, working to get all the audits up to date and current and Mr. Perez and everyone, you know, we just tried to keep afloat. And now, you know, obviously we're here where we are today and, and it was a total, total team effort. And I, I, I can't thank these guys enough because they're the ones who kind of led us in the right direction.
An excellent point to make. Of course, it's a, it's a team effort to bring in something like this. Of course, our city manager, Mr. Perez, Mr. Cantu, finance director, and yourself, Mr. Cruz, and, and all the staff, Mr. Tejera, Mr. Martinez, and everyone that's, that's part of this. It takes a collaborative effort. And when all of us put in our two cents, it creates a good, a good amount. So we're very well stated. It's a collaborative effort.
One more, one more group we forgot to mention is obviously Rio Delta. And, and they're still not done helping us, obviously, because we're going after another grant for thirteen million, which will help even pay off this loan. So, you know, it doesn't stop. We, we are not stopping and we don't want, plan on stopping anytime soon to try to bring more funding into the city so that we can continue on with these projects.
And thank you for bringing Rio Delta in as well. I mean, bottom line is, you know, it's good to recognize all the individuals and parties involved because it's, it's good that, that we can recognize everyone as part of it because it, it means a lot for our community and members of our community, right, that the end, next generations are the ones to benefit by the actions that we're taking today in moving Rio Grande City forward. And it speaks volumes for the work that you all are doing. And with that, any other things or questions, Commissioners? Will we entertain a motion at this time? No?
I would like to just to make a motion to approve this item as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez. We have a second, Mayor. Have a second by, I heard Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, raise your left hand. Motion passes. Once again, thank you for bringing this to our attention and making this possible. And it's a a win-win for the entire community of Rio Grande City. And everyone involved, again, we can't say enough about the work ethic that people here in our community and our staff members that do on a day-in, day-out basis. So thank you so much. And to our taxpayers, of course, it's a win-win for them. Obviously, when you're having a low-interest forgiveness loan as well, that goes a long ways for these much-needed projects. So thank you. Next, business in order. Thank you. Item four B, discussion and possible action approving resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-four, providing all chiefs of the city commission with an employment contract with the city of Rio Grande City. If we could hear on this, these are the, it's the fire chief and the police chief. Is that correct? And I know it says all chiefs, but it's, we're looking at the police chief and the fire chief. Any? Case?
Mayor.
Yes.
I thought we were doing this for all the departments.
Well, at this point, we're starting with the, we're considering the police and fire chief. And then at that point, looking at all the other directors as well. Is that something that we want to continue? And I know one of the questions about this is one of the things that, and I did say this, in fact, in one of the interviews in the monitor, that think that our, the reason we are in the position we're in is because of the staff members, the directors, the chiefs. And at some point, part of this is to afford that commitment that, that we're also committing to longevity of individuals, particularly starting off with those that require certain licensures that's for the police and fire. And then working our way through the other departments as well. So, but that's something I know we entrusted to look into. I know there were questions last time regarding the T M L recommendations and, and so on. So, and this is a conversation we need to and I do because going back to our staff, they're the ones that are putting us in the position we're in. And going and the leadership that we have here at the city, and they've done a tremendous job. And that's why we're in the best position, and I say this, and I will say it again. We're in the best position in the history of Rio Grande City when it comes to our finances, when it comes to our position here in the in spite of dealing with a global pandemic, the city is doing very well. Granted, there are many projects that we still need. There are many efforts that we still need to to pursue and many duties that we still need, but we look at all being said in perspective. Rio Grande City is in an excellent position because of our staff, because of the leadership of our city commission. And, but I go back mainly to our staff because they're the ones that are out there day in and day out. So at this point, I know we focused on the fire and police chief, but we can always, like I said, we need to bring it back down the road, maybe in the next meeting or, or future meetings, going back to those. But any other questions on these two? Because right now we're focused on the fire. Because right now, we're focused on the fire and the police and, and any thoughts?
Mayor, I just wanted to ask on the agenda, there was a sample of the police chief contract, the job descriptions and whatnot and salary and all that, but I didn't see one for the fire chief. Are we approving contracts in general, or are we going to come back and approve a specific contract at the next meeting?
We would still have to come back and approve the final contract because, of course, they still have to be willing to, to once we make the offer, then obviously they need to come back as well and decide. Is that correct, Mr. Yarri? Or what's the, the process here?
That is correct. Right now, all you're doing is passing a resolution for purposes of offering a contract, no details. You have to negotiate with them the details of that contract, but you're absolutely correct.
All right. Just for clarification. Thank you.
And if you see it on the agenda, it's in the back, the resolution. So they say we're looking at the resolution today, and then we can come back and revisit the details. Do y'all have a copy of the resolution? And on the resolution, it does state the and it's the appointed police and fire chiefs.
Mayor, just to bring up, I know I went this afternoon and I submitted a form on behalf of Chief Castillo in reference to his contract. I submitted it to Ms. Garza, told her to email it out and give a copy to Mr. Perez. I don't know if y'all received that copy. Basically, he's suggesting his contract.
Well, we'll go ahead and have a legal look at it, and, and then that way we can come back and make that, again, once that it's offered and both sides agree to it, then we'll proceed. Like I said, today is more of the resolution, and then we'll come back to the details. Is that the best way to go about it, Mr. Yarri? Just to make sure.
Correct. There has to be an offer and acceptance, and then it has to be approved. And at this point, you don't have either or. All you're saying is we're going to pass a resolution that regarding these two positions, we're going to offer them an employment contract. Then we discuss specifics, and that's when you vote on specific contracts. But that's not what's on the agenda today.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions or?
No, Mayor, I just.
Just that we need to consider the rest of the department, Mayor. If we're going to do it, I, I don't, I don't think it's fair because they all do a good job, and they're all part of the, part of the same group that has this city where it's at.
I agree. Last meeting, but again, there were some concerns, so we tabled that item, if you recall, Commissioner, but I agree with you. But for now, I think we got this item on the agenda, and I motion to approve it, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item four B by Commissioner Ramirez. Second. I have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, raise your left hand. And passes. And, and I agree. So that's something, Mr. Perez, I know, and Mr. Yarri, if we can look at the others or as far as the directors and how we proceed with those two, because I agree, as Commissioner Ramirez and Commissioner Garza, the, the opportunity, because it is, there are individuals who have placed in a position where we're at, and they work day in, day out. And of course, this is all the staff. But specifically, as we continue to move the city forward, is committing to our employees and them committing to, to the organization. Because, and this is what I would not want to see, to be honest with you, is that we have such valued directors, they, I really want them to stay with Rio Grande City and for them not to be poached by other entities or agencies wanting to have our, the staff that we, that we have and by us committing to them as well. It's saying something that, hey, we want you to stay with us. It wants, these positions are highly attractive, and we want to make sure that they also feel that they have that security as well. And we also know that they're wanting to stay with us in the long term as well. Particularly, like I said, Rio Grande City is in an excellent position. In spite of everything that's going on around us, we still are doing well. We are still in the position to to move our city forward. We have many projects that are coming to Rio Grande City, and we're in an excellent position financially and the cost of living here in our business community, even though we took a hit, we're still overall. So again, just continue to have our mind on that. Moving on, we item five, executive session, chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, section five five one, that's point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, and section five five one, point zero seven four, personnel matters. And we're going to go into executive session, so we're going to turn off this link and go on to the executive session link. So it is six thirty-five P M. Thank you. Executive session, it's item six, reconvening to regular session and consideration of action on matters discussed during executive session, including the following. There's no action on item six A, no action on item six B, and we have item six C.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize city manager to purchase the four units with the certificates obligation as discussed on executive session and recommended by Chief News.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item six C as described by Commissioner Ramirez. Second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, raise your left hand. Motion passed. At this time, do we entertain, well, before we do, by the way, just, I know the urgency order earlier today to extend it, but just wanted to notify individuals in the public that it's been support coming our way during this global pandemic, and there's been multiple examples of individuals giving back to our community, whether it's been food drives or food pantries, or over four million pounds of food have been distributed. And I just want to highlight that there's been individuals from outside the state of Texas who have also reached out to us and given or given to us a little bit of, one, their prayers, their support. I know we've had a lady from California that donated twenty-some, almost thirty pizzas to our sometime, a couple of weeks ago over to our hospital, and she paid them. She called from California to Pizza Hut here and ordered multiple pizzas for the hospital, and she just wanted to to give something to our community. We had another lady from Idaho send us a seventy-seven dollar check. And she also was wanting for us to give to our community, so we will be using some of those funds. And a couple of days ago, we had another lady from, I believe it was Washington, Belton, Washington, who donated a hundred base coverings and made, is that correct, handmade coverings to Rio Grande City and for us to distribute. So just wanted to say that during this global pandemic, our humanity still shows a testament to our humanity and people wanting to go back in some way, shape, or form. And thank you to those individuals who have had or opened their hearts to give to a community in time of need and those within our community, but also those individuals outside of our community who have taken the time to do something that means a lot to our community when individuals are wanting to reach out and say to our community, we're with you, we support you, and our prayers are, are with us. So thank you to those. I know we're reaching out to them. I've called several of those personally to thank them, and we're reaching out by sending them a letter of appreciation on behalf of our city commission that to thank them for, for that, those gestures of wanting to, to give something to our community, even if it's something small or even something. But nonetheless, it is a gesture for matters. So on behalf of our city commission, thank you to all individuals who have given back to our communities in some way, shape, or form and have made it their time, money, effort to fighting this global pandemic. And to those individuals outside of our community, also thank you for, for giving to our community during this time of need. Well, thank you. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Or any thoughts, Commissioners, any on those gestures of, from people outside of our community who have reached out to us and wanted to give in some way?
No, Mayor, just to record your sentiments, your, your comments, and again, thank them personally and let's make sure. I know you said you reached out to some individuals, but let's send them a letter on behalf of the city to thank them officially. And again, every little bit counts, and simple gestures like a face mask or anything like that, or just, you know, providing a meal goes away. So it's greatly appreciated. So on behalf of the city of Rio Grande, thank you all.
With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We'll move to adjourn, Mayor.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Jones. Second by Commissioner Flores. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those, raise your left hand. Motion passes, meeting adjourned. It is seven forty-eight P M. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.